Good evening, everybody. This meeting of the RMLD Board of Commissioners is being videotaped at RMLD's office at 2:30 Ash Street for distribution to the community TV stations in Reading, North Reading, Linfield, and Wilmington. The hello, Hameed. The RMLD Board of Commissioners recognizes the importance of hearing public comment. At the discretion of the Chair, we just ask that all questions be directed to the Chair and that you identify your name and address. There is no member of the public here, I don't think, so that is moot for the time being. Phil, are you okay to be Board Secretary?
Yes, I will be. I volunteer to be Secretary for now, between now and March.
Very good, then. Thank you.
Three months?
Three months.
Wow.
Okay.
You're getting paid by the word, or?
What?
Nothing. Double the usual rate?
Just consider, I'm saving you the rest of you.
And FinCom members are not here, but they're listed here. Karen Herrick or Mark Dox. Mark's now on the Select Board, so. But, yeah. So with that, public comment, I don't think we have any members in the public here. The CAB meeting just occurred, and I attended. It was a good meeting. Vivek, would you like to just brief us on anything from that?
Yeah. At the CAB meeting, we, I guess the main topic was the, was a financial update. And I have my notes here, so I can just pull it up. The summary.
It wasn't a long time ago.
It's basically really good accounts receivable. I think that was one thing. And the operating expenses are under budget by 2.7% through November. And this unrestricted cash reserve of 20.7 million, which covers three months of monthly operating expenses.
I think we also just, Colleen mentioned that she shared with them the same option, payment options that we received. And we'll talk to CAB members in the coming days, weeks, and at the next meeting on their thoughts on the payment options that we will be discussing tonight. Okay, with that, I think we are ready to approve board minutes. Yes?
Yeah, I'll move that the Board approves the meeting minutes of July 18, 2019. And September 19, 2019, the recommendation is General Manager.
Second.
All in favor? Question carries, 5-0. And with that, I think we move to our main item, which is to discuss the options that have been presented to us by General Manager and Wendy, the Business Finance Director.
No, the motion first. We can discuss.
I guess we could do that, because what we're doing here is we're not, we're only, we're only asking the CAB to consider the.
Take a look at it, sure.
So we'll start with the motion?
Yeah, we'll start with the motion. Move that the Board of Commissioners vote to request the Citizen Advisory Board to review and comment on three payment options presented by the one E&amp;E study, and the two and three GM, in concert with the Business Finance Director, and provide such feedback to the Board of Commissioners for their final approval of the Town of Reading payment.
Okay. Do we need a second?
Second, second.
So we'll discuss this now. And just a quick.
Why don't you read what the three motion, the three options are first?
Yeah, I will. I'll read them, but also, just to point out that the, there's some tables that I think have been posted on the website. Is that right, Wendy? So anybody who wants to see how these, these three options actually play out in terms of dollars, they are posted as part of the Board Book on the RMLD website. The first, well, actually, Colleen, do you want to, are you okay with explaining what the options are? Or Wendy, do you want to come up and do that? Yeah, that'd be great. Thank you.
Okay, can I just ask that, do you want me to just go over the tables, or do you want to give the consideration of why we decide on specific options?
I think, well, maybe first, just kind of set the table for what we're doing here. We're proposing, you know, we've had a three-year process now of discussing this topic.
Right.
I guess I could just offer that preamble, that there's been a three-year process of discussing this topic. And we're at the point now where Colleen and Wendy have come up with options, informed in part by a study that was done over the past year. And so we're here to just sort of formally receive these options, which Wendy will now explain, and ask the CAB for feedback, and then hopefully, in a subsequent meeting, the Board can actually go ahead and move forward with one of them.
Would you like me to also state the objectives of why we chose the specific options?
Yes. Yes, that'd be great. So go ahead and.
So I'll just state the objectives. So the reason, the reasoning behind the options that we are presenting, number one is to maintain the strategic financial plan and the RMLD mission statement, to cover the cost of production, to cover all town payments above and below the line, to minimize projected annual rate increases. In all scenarios, rate increases annually are projected, remain competitive in the middle of the rate comparison pack, all three classes, cover capital improvement plan and all scheduled construction transfer from operating fund, to depart based on present capital improvement plan budget from a temporary 8% rate of return, and return to the higher end of the average at about 6% rate of return. This also provides an appropriate margin in rate stabilization. The last three, maintain two to three times the monthly operating expenses to operating cash ratio, as we discuss here, monthly, preclude conversions of operating income ratio to town payments, which is, which is really what brought us here originally, to originally, the original concern, based on capital outlay, declining sales, increasing CPI and competitive rates. And lastly, to continue financial due diligence and financial planning to review electric sales, expenses, capital outlay, rate comparisons, the rate of return, operating fund, system status, and other financial obligations, scheduled or unscheduled. Okay? So we presented three options here. The first option was based on the Energy New England Study. So basically, the Energy New England Study is stating that we should get to a healthy three mills per kilowatt hour sale for the Town of Reading payment. This is the below-the-line payment. So we would transition over five years after the freeze of the $2,480,506 to, we'd start one year, 3.5, and then we'd go consecutive year after year, all the way down to calendar year '27, ending at three mills, at a payment of $1.9 million. And this is all based on the fact that kilowatt hour sales stay flat, because that's the current new information that we have. Okay?
Excuse me, Mr. Chair. So I was curious, Wendy, so I know you had done some projections on the kilowatt sales over 10 years, so that, that would indicate, other than, I'm just curious if there's new information on, in terms of whether it's revenue growth opportunities, because that shows like, almost 7% decline over 10 years, and, you know, kind of a, definitely a trending negative. So is there other, are we basing that on optimism for some of the new energy source? I guess why, why are we assuming flat versus?
Chuck, can you speak to that at all, or?
Right.
Going forward, we have a couple of impacts that we have identified. We are in the process of quantifying what they are right now. We have an electric vehicle program, or electrification program, including an electric vehicle program, heat pump program, both of which are looking to move energy consumption from other sectors into the electric sector. We expect that over time, those will provide growth in sales opportunities. We also know that we had some of the reductions in load over the last seven or eight years due to general economic effects and due to efficiency effects. In 2014, the federal government ordered the cessation of the production of incandescent light bulbs. And we've kind of switched over now to either LED or compact fluorescent technology. That's pretty stable. We entered a program where all of the HPS sodium street lighting was converted to LED technology. And now we're at a stable point there. So that's looking kind of flat. In addition, we have a couple of apartment complexes that are going to be adding units to the town. These are sort of deferred residential growth, if you will. My quick review of the numbers didn't show that we've had multiple projects of this type in the past few years. So this looks kind of a boom. So I don't have perfect information. This has not been a rigorous analysis, but based on what I've been seeing, the changes in the economy, the fact that some of the efficiency events have slowed a little bit, and in fact, we have programs to enhance electric load, I'm predicting it flat for right now, and over time, as our programs accelerate, I'm expecting that we may actually see some slight load growth in the half to 1% range going forward.
I guess my only thought, I think it's probably a reasonable assumption, but for consumption outside this room, people may not have been familiar with some of the inner pieces here, it'd be good to footnote that, because in a way where there's a built-in optimism, right, that it's not going to continue to, you know, have a negative trend, which, which if we purely based it on history, it would be.
Good. Thank you. Take care.
Okay, so then, option two, so this is based on the RMLD strategic planning and all the objectives that I had stated recently. The option two is basically staying, saying that an average of 3.78 mills per kilowatt hour sales is the flat 655 million kilowatt hour sales as compared to 2.48 million dollars. So we would say that we would be willing to go to a 3.75, stable, kilowatt, mills per kilowatt hour sales over the next five years through, well, after the freeze, through calendar year '27. So that would drop the payment slightly from $2,480,000 to $2,458,000. So then, it would be, at least it would be a stable formula to work with. And then the third option, we would, we would continue with the $2,480,000 over a 10-year period. That would be a complete freeze. And of course, everything that we're presenting here is pending catastrophic event or any reason that we would have to relook at this and make sure that the kilowatt hour sales are staying flat and not going down in the way that we had anticipated at the beginning, that it would continue to drop by 1% to 2% a year. So those are the three options right, right there.
So the, Wendy, if I may, so the ones that are based on the mills calculation multiplied by the kilowatt hour sales would, there's, that's self-compensating, right? I mean, when the kilowatt hour sales either go down or up, that's, that's, the number is what it is.
Correct.
To the multiplication.
Right.
So it could go either way. I mean, up or down, depending on what kilowatt hour sales. The only one that doesn't do that is one where we just hold it flat.
Right.
For that period of time. So just, just a little clarification on the, how the mechanics of this work.
And that was the whole intention from the, from the beginning, is to get to a better indicator of the health of the utility for the formula.
Mr. Chair.
Phil?
Yeah. So I, you know, I look at option three. I mean, option three seems like everybody wins in option three, from what I see. But the concern I have is what happens, what's going to be the process, say in fiscal year, you know, calendar year '25, you know, the, it drops. What's going to be, what's going to be the process that we're going to reevaluate somewhere down the road, if in fiscal, in calendar year '25, the, the sales are less at this point?
Right. I believe in the past meetings, we had discussed that along with choosing an option, that we would also choose a timeframe that would be acceptable to readdress this situation. Is that correct, Colleen? That we had talked about that? Yes. So I guess that would be, I guess it would be a decision on, on part of the Board to decide what would be a reasonable timeframe. So maybe you're saying five years, or maybe, you know?
I mean, that does color things a little bit differently from my, I mean, again, you know, the 10-year, option three is like, everybody wins.
Right.
Everybody wins in their option three. You know, and once you commit to that, there's no going back.
If I'm, that's, I think the, and then if you go to option two, I think the, the spirit of option two is that it does keep it flat, but also ties it to sales.
I agree. I agree. But I'm just, you know, looking at, again, you know, I focus on option three, because that seems to be, again, everybody wins in their option three. If you, if we commit to option three, you know, and then the sales drop down at some point, you know, I don't see how we get away from.
Right.
Not, not keeping that payment.
So can I, can I, so, once we had presented our objectives to the Board, we did have a note Bene saying that, given the current financial status of the RMLD, a rate increase of about, of up to 5% is projected over the next 10 years to meet the strategic financial plan objectives. And any of the three options, as listed above, as a reminder, any catastrophic event or a steady decline in kilowatt hour sales could impact the objectives and the resultant payment option. And that's where we would have to consider, how often we want to re, readdress this, or how, how much we really want to lock in, how many years, or what is, what is a target that we want to say, if it goes below a certain amount, a certain percentage of kilowatt hour sales, I should say?
So.
Yeah.
Got you. I mean. So I would, I would read this, then, as this is a best effort forward, but if there's extenuating circumstances that threaten the health of the RMLD from a capital perspective or anything else.
Right.
It would change. Now, that's just the caveat that's associated with this.
Right.
There's no promises on this, that it's going to be exactly, as a matter of fact, we can almost guarantee it will not be this.
Right.
Any one of these options, almost with certainty. But, but the fact is, we're trying on a best effort basis to give a general scenario of what it would look like with each option.
Dave, can I ask a question? So Wendy, with the locked-in option, option three.
Yes.
If kilowatt hour sales do drop, which it's not anticipated, but if they drop 1% or 2% per year, like they have been.
Right.
At the end of, when we get into years five, six, seven, eight, nine, 10, that must mean that the only thing that could happen is that rates will go up.
Correct. They will have to.
If we're going to continue to pay.
In order to meet the needs of the organization.
Whereas in option two, if rate, if kilowatt hour sales drop like they have been, we will, the payment will drop, and commen, what's the word?
Commensurally.
Yeah, you got that word? With that, is that right? We would not have the rate increases to the customers?
Right, because in option two, we're saying that regardless of what the kilowatt hour sales are, we are going to pay 3.75 mills of that. So yes, if the kilowatt hour sales drop, then the payment will drop, still based on the formula of 3.75 mills. Yes.
And that also means if we sell more kilowatt hour sales.
Correct.
The payment to the town is going up.
Correct.
So to me, that's more of the win-win, because that means we, we all, you know.
Well, yeah, it puts some, you know, municipal skin in the game, in terms of adopting ground source heat pumps or heat pumps for municipal properties and other things, that those things then have a different, an additional benefit back to the municipality, as do promotion of electric cars and other things, which moves us in the right direction as a society, hopefully.
But, you know, can I continue?
No.
Okay. Option one is the, the healthiest one for RMLD, clearly, but that's also the one that I think would be very shocking to the town of Reading, because it would be, it would really affect the town's budget.
I would assume it would, yes.
Right.
I think, and correct me if I'm wrong, but at the highest level, option one over a few years would may mean a cut of about a half a million, right?
Yeah, over the, over the 90-year period.
Over the 90 years.
Half a million dollars.
Option two would keep it flat, but then it's pegged now to sales. So if it's up, then it'd go, okay. Option three is flat. And then the one that's not here is that what if we had done nothing? And I know we don't, we don't know what the CPI would have been, but let's say if it had been 2% to pick a random number, over eight years, the 2.48 would have gone up to 3 million. So there would have been another half a million. So I think, for anybody who's thinking the payment has gotten out of control, which I think we all saw that it had been.
Right.
That's, we've basically addressed that part of it, I think, to the benefit of RMLD and all four of our towns, and then most of all, the ratepayer.
Right.
Yeah. So.
So at, I guess we're really trying about, talking about getting this to the CAB.
Correct.
And talk about it, think about it, noodle on it for a little bit, and get back to us with what they think might be a good option, that we can take into consideration.
Yeah, sure, Phil, then.
I mean, it seems to me that, you know, maybe we should be taking option three off the table. Because, and then, you replace it with either option, you know, we have option one and option two, with the idea that option two, we would determine the period of time at which a potential transition takes place. I'm very wary about putting option three on the table, with what I've heard just here tonight at this point.
Tom?
The fact that somewhere in, you know, in, if in, just in calendar year 2025, the sales drop.
Yeah. Option two, we don't need a transition, though, because it's almost, it's.
Right. That's what I'm, that's what I'm saying.
Option one needs a transition.
We just determine what that period should be, that it's frozen, as opposed to option three, putting that out there and saying that's, that's on for the next 10 years.
Sure. Hold that thought for one sec. Let's hear what Tom's trying to say.
Yeah, so I mean, I, I sort of agree with Phil's thing. I guess for me, you know, I think at play here is the town is obviously looking at resources and funding, but also predictability, right? So, because it's difficult, we all know, for any budget process to react in, you know, eight months, you know, to any significant swing. So I was sort of thinking that what would be beneficial is something more in the magnitude of five years. I'm trying to remember, are we, are we really in fiscal year, have we transitioned around a calendar, are we in fiscal year '20 now? Is that?
We have just, we're just completed our full calendar year, first full calendar year, '19. Yes.
Okay, so this is really see.
Fiscal year '20.
Okay. Yep. Okay. So it would seem to me that, these aren't the exact numbers, but having, you know, whatever, five years or something of, you know, stability or predictability like this chart, but also, it seems to me, there needs to be, someone mentioned, there needs to be a threshold at which, you know, an alarm goes off, because from the RMLD side, the only catastrophic thing, if, if things drop like a stone, right, then we, the only choice we have is to increase rates, right? Effectively, you know, that's the only way, other way to get the, the numbers up. So, which is, it doesn't help the town overall, right, the residents, because, you know, the stable, you know, town bill, and they get a big RMLD bill. So if we could somehow put in, and I don't have the numbers to me, that's something we could just think about, if there was some threshold at which if kilowatt hour sales dipped below a certain point, you know, that would set off a noticing to all, and then we may have to say, okay, from this point on, you know, we'll finish out whatever this year and next year, but then we're going to have to reevaluate the formula, because it's, it sort of, it sort of falls into that catastrophic.
Can I ask a clarifying question to Tom?
Yeah.
Tom, you talk about option three only, because the other ones, it seems like they'll just move with kilowatt hour sales, right?
Right.
Are you, you're referencing?
Yeah. Yeah, I guess what I'm saying is, we have some, we have some freeze on the, on the payment, though, with two, right?
And option two.
Option two has a freeze in it?
Right.
Yeah. But it may not be, that's why I asked what year we're in, so it's, it's really just this year and next year, right? Yeah. Okay.
Goes through calendar year '21.
Yeah. Okay, so, yeah.
Couple, sorry. A couple of quick thoughts on that. So I think already, we've built in this global sort of caveat, that if things get bad, you know, us or our future Board could revisit it at any, at any year, right? That's always the case. So I think that, that caveat is already in this.
Yeah. I would only suggest that there'd be more, a little more specificity, because that's a, that, you know, that, that would be a field day, you know, that could be a lot of things to different people, you know, but, but I hear what you're saying. We might just give some thought to, you know, what examples of what that could look like, because from the town's point of view, you know, it can't be code, because, well, you know, we've, this happened, and we need to, that's, your idea of, my idea of a, you know, catastrophe is different than your idea of a catastrophe, right?
Can I, can I add to that a little bit?
Yeah, please.
Okay. So I mean, the agenda of the RMLD is first and foremost, you know, the responsibility to the ratepayers. And of course, we understand, and we've heard the Town of Reading's discussion on this, and we understand that they need a number that they can count on with their budget. So that was the reason for Colleen and I's third option. So we had discussed, Colleen and I had discussed, if we choose option three, that it might also be beneficial to put in there something to the fact of, if we have a three-year in a row decrease of kilowatt hour sales, then we would move to stabilize the formula. So we could, we could choose option three, but if there was a consistent occurrence of this kilowatt hour sales decrease, then, then it would have to be stabilized at that point.
Sure. And I think that tweak, or any tweaks, are something that we could also do when we're at the point of actually hammering out a motion for the actual formula. At this point, what we're doing is sending options to the CAB for their input, and then it won't be the later January meeting, it'll be the February meeting when we next take this up seriously.
Sure.
So I think we have an opportunity to do these tweaks before that meeting, and then during that meeting.
Yeah. Just final comment. So, I mean, a couple of people said lost options are win-win. I guess the only scenario it isn't, is if there was a catastrophic change in our top line, right? Because we're committed to that number. So from, from the RMLD side, it really isn't a, and I think 10 years is a long, you know, that's hard to predict, you know, anything. Who knows what the sources would be? So I, I think I agree with Phil in that respect. It's, you know, five years, we can sort of manage that window, but I think 10 is, if it, if it's not self-correcting, because it adjusts, you know, through the formula.
A couple of quick, my thought on Phil's is that I may tend to agree with you at this point on, on the merits of option three, or the downsides of it. But what we're doing now is just sending options to the CAB. And it doesn't mean that we're endorsing any one of them. And I would add also that what we haven't put on here is any option that would have, say, changed the multiplier from CPI to, say, 1%, so it would actually be going up. We've already, by, by selecting this, we've, we've eliminated any option that would have increased it, except for that, which would have been triggered by a big increase in sales.
Right, no arbitrary increases, like what we had before.
Right. We don't, we do not have an option four that either restores CPI or something smaller than CPI.
Nor, nor should we.
Right, but I'm just saying, so I think we've already been, this is already a somewhat conservative list in that sense, and I would be against removing option three at this stage of the game, because we're just sending it down to the CAB.
Yeah, I guess the only, it might just help for them to have some input, what Vivek does, but, I mean, the other side of it is, we don't want to present an option that they all like, that the Board dismisses, because we didn't think it was a viable option. I must say, we're there, but if, maybe just provide that input, it is something that needs more.
Sure. Okay.
Let me just ask, just me just ask Vivek, I mean, what's, what's the message that you're going to take, that you're, and this, I'm asking your personal opinion, not representing the, the whole CAB. What's the message that you're going to take back from this?
So, so the message is that, and I'm, and I think I mentioned it to the CAB meeting last time also, that the Board is coming up with proposals that they would like us to review at the CAB, and have a discussion, and make a recommendation of what we support, right? That is, at a high level, that's what I take. In terms of the details, so I think that was, so I'm not going any more finer than that, right? So, so we'll take whatever formally comes to the CAB and then respond to that. The question I have, and it's for Colleen and Wendy, I mean, it's based on the discussion we had in the CAB today. There was a little bit of a conversation with Wilmington, right? So they are looking at planning 18 months out. So I think all towns want some predictability. So it's just a question of taking a sense of, okay, if you take revenues for 2019, and you say the payment for 2020 is going to be based on revenues for 2019, then, all I want to make sure is that the lag that is in the system accounts for enough planning information, so that enough visibility, so that people know what their budgets are going to be. So I want to make sure that, you know, that. So I want to make sure that, you know, the time period is appropriate, so the lag may actually, so, because there was, it was a little bit of a surprise to you, right, Colleen? What George was.
I think the lag would be, that the payment would be based on the previous calendar year's audited kilowatt hour sales.
Right, so, so previous years audited, so it'll go back one more year, right?
Right, I think the conversation in the cab, if I could, that we had said that there was no rate increase per calendar year 19.
20.
What?
20, 20.
20, sorry, for calendar year 20. And that anything that would affect the second half of the fiscal year for the towns that are coming up to do their fiscal year 21, that we have to get our cost of service done, and that we would get that information and make sure it's segwayed into the town's process. It was news to me today that Wilmington does their fiscal year 21 budget process starting in November, the previous year, whereas the town of Reading does it more in February, March. So the conversation, regardless of whether you're on calendar year or fiscal year, we were never really able to project 18 months out. I mean, we have a six-year plan that shows that we're going to have rate increases every single year, just to be able to do this financial plan that we have in front of us. That's going to happen every year, the first couple of years will be subsidized by bringing the rate stabilization back into policy levels, but going forward, you're going to have a bump every, every year. And we try to lay out the six-year plan, so that all the towns and the cab members have that, and that's your planning map, the best we have, we make that transparent. So the only thing I can say about the payment is we spent a lot of time evaluating what's an indication of the health of the utility, okay? So even if you decide that you want to keep it flat, we still have to say that that is approximately 3.75 mils per kilowatt hour sales. You can't go back to 2.48 million and just say it's an arbitrary number, and we're just keeping it flat for 10 years arbitrarily, so that our next generation has to start all over again with the health. So once we come up with the formula for the health, meaning a unit of kilowatt hour sales, you can play a little bit with the mil unit, that it meets your financial, the Reading municipal light financials, not every other town that's out there, our financials. So you can use all the studies to give you an overall picture of what we do in New England, what we do across the nation, but when it comes down to it, we have an oath to protect this utility. So when Wendy and I look at the numbers, we changed it, or made a recommendation to go from three to 3.75, that would kind of hold the payout, so that no one would get hurt, because we, we felt like we could afford that without adversely impacting our ratepayers, not adversely impacting the town, and we spent a lot of time on this. So I just don't want to lose that piece, whatever you decide that you want to vote on, because a lot of work went into that.
Yeah, no, and my point, thank you, that was really good. So all I would say is that the towns just need to have better awareness, that this is how the planning is going to be, and so if, you know, if someone takes 18 months or something, then they need to just factor that in, so that, I think, this just, it's a clear communication saying, this is how we're going to do it, and like you said, maybe fix it to mils rather than 2.48.
But, but I think the other issue you raise is, so, the town is still on July to June, I think.
June year, yeah.
So what we're calling, so the thing that has to be rationalized is, when we talk about, so for example, in fiscal 21, 22, the payment goes up to two, or changes to 2458, right? So when do we make the payments? We're on calendar, so does that get paid early, late in '22?
It's going to get paid twice a year, same as it is now, and it's based on the previous calendar year's audited financials of kilowatt hour sales that we submit to the Department of Public Utilities.
Okay.
That's, that's what we do now, or that's what we would do now, and how we pay it out now.
But that's still not going to be in lockstep with the town, because the town is going to be ahead of us by six months, right? Their fiscal year starts earlier than ours.
Well, they'll, they'll know what they're going to get.
Based on the previous calendar year.
Based on the previous calendar year, it's the only thing we have to work with, right? Town doesn't have a variable input, variable model like we do, I mean, we're just subject to how much power is being used.
Yeah, I bring it up only because when we talk fiscal years now, we have to be careful what we communicate to the town, because we're a different.
Well, I think that the town, certainly the town of Reading, I know, wanted stability in the sense of knowing what the number was. They didn't necessarily, until a little bit later on, start talking about whether it's bigger or smaller than what they've been receiving, and we had to obviously add that component to the equation as well, so it's not just predictability, but it's predictability with a reasonable number that doesn't shock them too much, using an electrical term.
Oh.
So.
Good comment, right?
I think, so what we're doing, again, is we're sending these to the cab for feedback, and I think Vivek also, it would be, I think it would be a mistake to say we're asking to pick one, and that that's the one that the board is going to consider. I think we want, we want to get feedback on the suite of options, and then our board is just going to, we're just going to have to take a decision, hopefully at the February meeting, if we can, to move on from this issue, knowing that if things change in the future, then we can, we can change it. But it's just, you know, I think we should move it along, and I hope that you all will, although I take your point, Phil, is that we can move all three of these, and Colleen's point about the hard work that was put into them, and move all three down to the cab, and go from there. So, and, go ahead, Tom.
Yeah, I couldn't understand earlier, so has the cab seen these before, any of the other back data? Because the reason I'm asking, if they haven't, it would seem to me that someone, the cab sitting down and reviewing them without the benefit of, you know, what we heard today here, unless we expect Vivek to bring that back, and there's a lot of objectives in it, so they're going to need more than just the three options, I guess is my point.
They'll get all that from.
Yeah, the memo that I had sent out with all the objectives that Wendy just read, that's, that's the preface that would get forwarded with the.
Yeah, but I mean, just, if they're going to have an intelligent discussion, I would think if they have questions, wouldn't you want someone that can answer them, as opposed to.
I think you're going to be there, I mean, that's.
Oh, well, you'll be at that meeting, right? Oh, okay, yeah, right, okay, yeah, that's really, yeah.
They can.
And they're going to call her, and then Colleen staffs those meetings, too.
Yeah, right.
So, unless there's anything else, I'm, we have a motion in a second on moving these along, I would say I'm ready for a vote, unless you, anybody disagrees.
Yeah.
So, all in favor, we did a motion in a second, all in favor of the motion, okay? Okay, all against, so we have 5-0, as written. Thank you very much, Wendy and Colleen, for your hard work on that.
Good discussion, Mr. Chairman.
And, and you, Phil?
Thank you.
So, next is, we have a potential tweak to the evaluation process for the general manager, and Dave, would you like to discuss?
Sure.
What, and Tom, I know both have HR expertise, and did some work on a tweak to the process that we've been using.
Yeah, and this started a couple of months ago, and we started thinking about how our performance evaluation system of the general manager is a little outdated, could be more effective, but one of the big things is that we only talk about it once a year in an official way, and the trends in HR are going, saying, keeping the performance evaluation conversations closer to when the performance happened, so that's one, one big thing. The other big thing is the putting numbers, number ratings, or number ratings really stifle conversation, and, and also combining salary conversations and pay conversations with performance discussions in that same meeting can also stifle conversation. So it's more about dialogue, it's more often, and also incorporates some specific goals that the board, in collaboration with the general manager, think are a priority for that current year. So those, those are the big things. And that was my big concept. Now, Tom, being an HR expert, has taken, taken this a little further, and I think I'll pass it to Tom at this point, because Tom spent more time on this document that we're looking at now. I don't know if people here can see it, but maybe we don't need the document, we could talk it through, Tom, I don't, maybe.
Yeah, that's fine. Does everybody have a, I guess, go ahead?
Yeah, it's not in the board book, so we should probably rectify that.
Are you good?
No, I know, you know.
All right, so, so as Dave said, I mean, basically, what a lot of companies have recognized, this has been a process over the last several years around what an effective review is, and.
Wait, hold one second, I mean, is it possible, we do have this, it's a PowerPoint, right? Is it possible, I know it's a little last minute here, but.
You mean, maybe throw it up on the screen?
Yeah, that's what I mean, we could throw it up on the screen, I mean, it was a PowerPoint presentation.
Sorry to put you on the spot, Tracy.
I was going to ask.
Yeah, it's helpful for focus, so people are all literally on the same page.
While that is going on, one of the, could I ask a question about, I think I like it, and I like the process, but then one of the questions I have is, does the board then have to agree on sort of what the one, two, and three goals are, as opposed to, you know, all of us sort of chickens coming in and going, I want this one, and I want that one, and I want that one.
The answer is yes to that.
Good.
Yeah, and there should be very few.
Absolutely, enclosure.
Yeah, enclosure and critical few, as we like to say.
Critical.
Yeah, yeah, so I mean, if you think about it, the board is actually the manager here, you know, the one up, so what, what we do is present a couple of three goals, but as a group, so, yeah, so we do have to say, okay, what are the.
And the, the other caveat is, I think we need to, if Colleen hasn't reviewed her contract, yeah, we have to make sure that it ties in with her contract, in a way that doesn't negate what your contract is, I mean, on those, so, so it's just a couple of pieces, I think, that need to be.
Yeah, how would it, can I ask a question, what are you concerned about, John, with the contract, what's, how would it affect?
Whatever the language is in the contract, I actually haven't read the contract in a long time, but I think we had something in there about.
Mutually agreed.
Mutually agreed and yearly reviews, so if we're going to change it, we need to make sure it gets embedded in the contract, so that Colleen is comfortable with it as well.
Yeah, I don't think we're going to change, we're not recommending changing the yearly review, just quarterly and rolling it up to a yearly review, so we're just adding to it, but maybe, maybe it needs to be changed or contract, I don't know.
Yeah, Dave and I had, the thought process was, because it's new, is to, I think you had mentioned, Colleen, maybe we can take offline, take some time, and just walk through it a little, because, I mean, you should have more questions, being the person that, you know, is in the process, so, Dave, I think we could do that, right? Walk an hour, just kind of walk through the.
And then if there needs to be a board vote, we could do it at the next meeting, and that, I don't think, there's nothing we're acting on tonight, we're discussing it tonight.
Yep.
So we'd act on it at the next meeting, welcome.
Okay, I don't know if we need to adjust the lighting, is.
Behind you, Vivek.
Behind you, Vivek, there's this one here, or this, it's pretty, in them all, yeah.
Okay, so, as David highlighted, so up there is kind of the, you know, the old and the new, so, you know, this isn't, you know, true exactly in every company, but there is a lot of statistical data to suggest that for most companies, I mean, if you ask any company how great their performance review process is.
There's good if you turn it off.
Yep.
There you go.
You know, largely, largely, they're, they're not very effective, so the idea here is to impact the business and the, I'm having trouble reading, because I can't see, so, let me see if I can.
I can give you my glasses, but I.
No, it's just I can't see, I can't, I can't see.
See this?
Yeah, yeah, so, I don't know, let me think.
If I can find it here.
No, I can just.
Here it is, here.
Yeah, it's easier.
Here, you go, Tom.
Okay, it's nice to have mood lighting, but, yeah, so, I mean, the whole idea is to, is to, really to simplify the process, you know, I think some statistics showed for, as far as being time-consuming, the current process in companies, managers spend on average a couple of hundred hours of time, and, so, this is intended to be quick, smooth, efficient, and, you know, moving from once a year to multiple feedback opportunities, I mean, the, the pace of change in organizations is such, you know, a goal set in January, hardly ever, you know, remains static for 12 months, so this provides flexibility in multiple opportunities for dialogue and for communication. The old process focuses on past behavior, and what we're saying is, we really want to talk about that, but really, how can we improve current performance and the business results? Ratings focused, Dave talked about that, this is really results and development focused. And I think a lot of studies suggest that the old system is adversarial, right? I mean, the managers talking to the employee, they've already written their views, so there really isn't much room for negotiation or change, so this is meant to be a collaborative process, and really, focus also on team success, not just purely the individual performance, it's that, that's what adds value. And a lot of the, you know, a lot of reviews typically under the old process tend to be looking at improvement needs only, and this is really built on, you know, strengths building, I think, I think you even may use it here, because there's a Strength Finder that a lot of companies are using now, that really say you can make more improvement focusing on what you do well, as opposed to, you know, hours of, you know, working on your, your things that you don't do so well. And it's really about the agility piece, so, because of the change, and certainly, RMLD is going through this with all of the change in, you know, energy sources and opportunities, so we need a process that can be flexible and agile, so, all of this, I think, is what we get out of the quarterly check-in. Okay, so what, what does it look like? In some of this, Dave and I talked about, we can put this into a forum online or otherwise, but the, the big pieces are, so first is, it's a goal review and project review, I won't read all of these, because you have them up there, and you have a handout, but it's basically to take the commissioner-suggested and agreed-upon goals, which are two or three, as well as the focus areas, you know, the, running the railroad that Colleen has to do, that we probably aren't always privy to, and to be able to review those, you know, clarify, review, help with obstacles and challenges, maybe there's some things the board can suggest to be supportive, modify goals, there are going to be some goals that get set that may lose their effectiveness, because they become out of date, or because, you know, were not able to execute for different reasons. Part of this is an acknowledgement piece of successes and accomplishments. Also, new goals, I mean, the process, I don't think would include adding new goals as a normal ritual, but if we take a goal off the plate, maybe that, there's something else in its place that would make sense. And again, all of this is, the focus, as Dave has mentioned a few times, is around the dialogue and the discussion, it's not about, here's what we want you to do, and, you know, go forth and do it. And I think the role of the commissioners here is really to be, it's really a classic coaching and, you know, development and support role, right? How can we be helpful, given the, you know, the challenges that you're facing, and, you know, the work ahead of us? And then lastly, if there's, which there always is, some lessons to be learned from either that process or from the first review, we, you know, we look at those, you know, and talk about them. So stop me if there are questions. So the number two, there's a little overlap with that, but number two is really just to take a pause, because I think we've seen when Colleen has done her self-assessment, you know, it's amazing how many things that we knew about, kind of, but I mean, it's just, you know, when she articulates all of those soft savings, hard savings, so this is a way to say, rather than just wait 12 months and have a real dump of it, let's talk about during the year, what's, what's accomplished, you know, celebrate those successes, and be sure, because behind that is also a lot of hard work, you know, those just don't happen, you know, they're not just things that she outsources, so we want to also be appreciative of that, you know, that is part of the, the job that she has as general manager. Next is, so, development and learning, and, you know, this would be different at Colleen's level, but still not inappropriate, so here, it's more about, you know, a lot of this may be driven by Colleen, because she's the expert here in terms of the industry, she's already well-plugged in, but there may be some things that she sees as necessary and appropriate, given the change in technologies or changes in the industry, and so we want to talk about those and make sure she's, you know, because a lot of times, the development piece gets minimized, certainly in the old process, because, you know, most of the time is spent arguing over, you know, whether you did the goal or didn't do the goal, and, you know, the rating and so forth. And I would see this as an opportunity for Colleen also to ask if she's getting, you know, the right feedback, helpful feedback, and, yeah, too much feedback, so, because we also have to be cognizant, unlike, you know, other businesses, you know, our role as board, you know, we don't reach into the, you know, the tactical, it shouldn't, operational side, as, as other, you know, companies may. Unlike, you know, other businesses, you know, our role as board, you know, we don't reach into the, you know, the tactical and shouldn't operational side as, as other, you know, companies may be structured. So it's really about, we want to be helpful and, so again, we want to be sure we, as our role as commissioner, is we make sure we, we tap into that question.
Can you make a comment?
Sure.
Because I'm glad you mentioned that. Because I mean, I like the whole process. I really do. The only thing that seemed a little strange to me is that, you know, from a corporation perspective, this is great. You got a manager and a team and you're part of a bigger manager and team format and they all kind of stack together to form a corporation. But I'm not aware of any corporations whose board of directors does this for the CEO. Or am I getting correct? Do they do that in your experience?
Yeah, I don't know, Dave, I don't know if you have any, I'd say generally not. And some of that is it's, you know, isn't to say it wouldn't be appropriate, but boards, yeah, boards. Yeah, they generally, they do the, you know, they have a, as you know, they'll have a compensation committee and they'll do the financial review. But yeah, no, it, and, you know, I think this, so I don't know if you, did you see this as, I agree with you, so it's not.
I think it's interesting. I think the applicability internal to a corporation or a company is, is really a good thing to do and that's why it's here. But at the senior level, I'm not sure. And you mentioned about, I mean, our responsibilities at board are, two responsibilities really. One is to hire the general manager.
Yeah.
And the second is to, you know, make approval of capital and things like that, for the most part. Those are the two major things. So this kind of moves us into a different sphere of influence with the general manager, which I'm all for. Because we, and I think making it happen sooner rather than later, that's a good thing. But I just wanted to sort of clarify that.
Yeah, it is. There's a little bit of gray here. I think in terms of where we started with, I think, I think we could make, I think we can shape this to account for, and that's why I think we do need to make sure there's a lot of dialogue around, you know. Because it, it would be easy to take the board hat on and put, you know, the.
We can't do that.
Yeah, the supervisor hat. So, but I think there's enough goodness about this that we won't get into, you know, debating over, you know, point systems and really around. Really, I think if anything comes out of it, you know, as a board, how can we help? You know, you're, you're running the railroad, but you know, we're, we're here to help. What can we do? What do you need? And yes, Vivek?
No, I, I like the concept of having a structure like this. The only question is that in most organizations, if you are setting an organizational goal, it's a trickle down, right?
Right.
So if you have a system that works for the CEO, then it trickles down. So I'm just curious, what is the system that RMLD uses for Hamid and for Chuck and Wendy? And if this is different from that, I don't know what that system is. So if this is different from that, you know, it's, I, I think we should recognize that. Because a good way to do what you really want to do is it should be trickle down, right? So this, GM's goals trickle down to goals for individuals down, you know, that, that's, that's how it works. And I think that's the spirit of what you guys are trying to do. So, but my sense is you'll have one system for the general manager and one for the rest of the organization. And so, so you just need to recognize.
Yeah, I think the trickle down piece, so that's cascading goals. So I think that would happen. We haven't really talked, because that's a separate, the goal setting is really a separate process, right?
I think you're saying, you're saying, you're saying talk about the process of evaluation.
Yeah, well, the goal setting process, I just wanted to take, so if, the, the thing that you want to make sure gets cascaded is your goals, right? I mean, your development plans are going to be different for every person, for example, right? And their needs and, and challenges are different. But as far as the major, if you think about the major work is usually structured around goals and projects, right? So that's, that's, that piece is covered through a separate goal setting process where, and Colleen, I assume, has that already in place here. I do think, I mean, the goal here would be to let this be the process, but Dave and I haven't talked about this. But I think that before, especially where the year has already begun, I would think that we would want to do is use this as a process for the board to review Colleen. And then we could evaluate it and we'll know after a few iterations if we're getting the intended benefit out of it. And then we could talk about how do we move this into, rather than moving the whole organization through would be my suggestion.
Just to weigh in, maybe we can take some of this offline and bring it back to the next meeting and wrap up the discussion at this point.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay.
But yeah, or just move through it quickly.
Yeah, let me, yeah, so, yeah, let me, because then we can, and it's important for Colleen to, so next is, you know, really a company or team update. So that's really what's going on new in the organization that, you know, sometimes we get talked about anecdotally, but this is just a placeholder if, if that's there. Or maybe there's a strategic opportunity that Colleen wanted to share or discuss with the board. Next slide, please. And, and then really it's a wrap up. So it's really summarizing, you know, and I say memorialized because even though we're trying to get away through forms and paper, you know, the, the limitation in a lot of meetings and discussions is, you know, if there's some key things you want to do, you do want to be able to capture them. So you can talk about it next time you gather, especially where there's some intervening time. And, you know, there would be at that point, the opportunity for the general manager to talk about perspectives and then you set your next meeting. The important note is, again, it's a dialogue. It's not a lecture. It's not a, you know, command and control. It's really about active listening at both spots and construction, constructive feedback. I will go through the next slide. The next slide is really just a timeline and it really, there's really two pieces. It's really, you know, the process would be to do this, you know, January, April, July, and October, probably try to build it around if the board agrees around the board meetings. And, you know, as we've talked about before, we'll have the qualitative feedback will replace the, you know, the hundred point scale system of, you know. And then separate but important, it ties into the question that, you know, John raised about, so we still have to have a, an annual compensation review. But that'll be based on, you know, the outcomes of the check ins, the, you know, we'll look at the, as we always do, the salary benchmarks for the general manager within the industry. And other, you know, the financial health and economics, which is always part of it. Okay. Thank you for the assist.
Should we work on having this be ready for some type of action item as needed, Colleen, for next, next meeting?
I'm on the way. Me.
What's that again, Dave?
I mean, I guess it, moving this to an action item for the next meeting, like.
I think the action item offline, Dave and I will meet with Colleen and then we'll bring it back to the board in terms of. I think the, the only other thought is, you know, from the timing of it, if we want to go with it immediately or if we think we need to do, because we have that six month piece that we have.
I was just about to bring that up. I think at our next meeting, we need to finish the evaluation for the six month period of Colleen in our next meeting. So it's done using the old process.
Yeah.
Paper before we move into this.
Yeah. And I would say my experience with this is, and not that we wouldn't be thoughtful about it, but, you know, the rigor that we've put into a year, an annual review. You know, I think it's all commensurate with, you know, the amount of time we're looking, so we're looking at a six month window. So I think we can size it appropriately.
Okay. And just maybe we can briefly discuss any, like the goals question. Is there, can we get a consensus and then maybe at the next meeting, vote on three or four goals or whatever we think that we would like as a board to move and.
If I may.
You may.
We almost came to this at one of our other meetings. I, I think we should all sort of step back as commissioners, come up with the, what we think are the three top ones. Because we all have different things, maybe have five, you know, that we can rank, so we can pick three that we have consensus on anyway, before we would feed into this. Would that be okay? Because I, I'm not sure we could vote on it at the next meeting. I think we can assemble everything.
Sure.
And, you know, and we could circulate them, I think, outside of the, no.
Ideally, we do it at the meeting, but yes, we could, we could, we could assemble a list offline, but the meetings are where we should, you know, kind of deliberate on them. If anybody has anything now, I know we've had a couple of preliminary discussions. I only have two, but if anybody else wants to.
I had them, but there, I wrote them down last time.
Yeah, I, just with the kilowatt hour sales being just a major issue with our payment to the town, I don't have a fully baked goal. But it just, my idea is that a major goal would be how can we increase kilowatt hour sales in more creative ways, you know? So we could just let, you know, roll with the, I know we're not doing that now. We're doing so many things, but I think that's a major priority, so.
One of the, I left it in the car, but it's, I'll, I'll circulate it. So one of the things, some of it's, I think, already being done. I guess it's more about the packaging of it and the report out. So my thought was, we met, we have a strategy meeting a number of months or years ago, we remember in the boardroom around revenue streams. You know, we talked about service opportunities and I thought it was a very good discussion in light of the, I mean, the big driver here is kilowatt sales, right? So we, there's a lot of things that impacted in a negative way, even though they're highly efficient in energy and green and so forth. So with Colleen's, you know, thoughts, you know, put together kind of a scorecard of what are the three or 10 or nine or seven impacts? I mean, Chuck talked a little bit about the things that, you know, like the electric vehicle thing. So let's talk about and maybe create some new ones or give Colleen and her team time to noodle and say, here's five or six or whatever the right number is even of revenue stream opportunities. And put a scorecard together and we can just use that as a, a goal throughout the year to kind of track. Because I, I think it's like any business that gets, you know, to a point where they're kind of flattening sales, right? If you don't, you know.
If you're not growing, you're dying.
Yeah. So that would be.
They probably have limited ability to, you know, affect demand. I think that we have a lot of good programs for heat pumps and other things, electric car charging, so that we, I completely agree with you.
So the goal would be to come up with the programs, not necessarily go door to door and force people to.
No, we want to go door to door.
It's not going to be a good scorecard, just telling you.
How many doors you go per month is the metric we're looking for.
We're going to be equipping you with vacuum cleaners too.
It's getting quantitative again.
Only because it's an adjacent business.
The primary goal is to have a reliable electric service.
Yes, indeed.
All of the programs that we offer to try to focus on long-term planning.
Right.
Is essentially, you know, I can't drag the horse and drink the water. We, we do a lot of work. We're creating programs and sometimes.
Yeah, no, 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 that's.
And you also can't control if there's a recession and things go down 5% so.
Well, I just didn't know what Tom's scorecard, if it was going door to door and becoming a GM to a salesman.
Okay.
So I think maybe the way to do this is to have, we'll do the offline thing. We'll get a list of 10 and we'll bring it to the next meeting. We'll win it down to four and we'll do it that way and.
It wasn't.
Does that sound like a good process?
Yes.
Do a list offline, next meeting, we'll get it down to four and we'll move on. Okay?
Right, okay. So let's. Dave, as a, just to add to that, is there anything that is inconsistent with our processes here? Could we get them all to Tracy or whatever? Get them summarized and get the complete list out to everybody, then we could come to the board meeting with having seen them all and.
Yeah, I had to check the open meeting law thing. We don't want to be emailing each other about what we think the goal should be. So maybe they all go to Tracy or maybe they all go to me.
Yeah, no, I'm just saying.
And I keep one list or whatever.
Yeah, but then get the, I think the added step is if everyone had the complete list, not for discussion prior to the meeting, but just to look at them and then. Otherwise, you're going to have to do it real time here.
Which is very intense.
Yeah, and I think, can I say one thing? I think we really want to get advice from Colleen and her team about what, what does she think, you know? Because she's closer to, you know, what's happening.
Of course, yeah.
What does she think the priority should be for this coming year?
That's really, there should be mutually agreed upon goals.
Right.
And it trick, sorry. I, I think it trickles down from the mission of the organization.
Right.
So whatever the plan is, so like what Colleen said, okay, so focus on that and then say, the goals are consistent in that.
What I would like to see if we could, and, and if we send everything into Tracy, for example, and just put it into a one-page matrix with all the goals. And then we are, we rank individually one to 10s. We have one page to look at in our next meeting or whatever and say, you thought of this and you thought of this. And are there any consistencies here that just jump out at you as being?
Yeah, and I think overall, we know that there's 100 wonderful engineering, programmatic, capital planning things that are going on. And this is sort of, maybe there's some things out of the box that we add to it, but we know all those things are going on and we don't want to step on those or, or say that. Anyway, so yeah, we'll, we'll bring them in for the next meeting. We'll do it there.
We have a request still before we go to the next.
Please.
So my contract says I have to get your approval to transfer some vacation time over because the last quarter of 2019, the workload and extenuating circumstances was pretty tough. So I planned to take it. I had to cancel a vacation. I'll do it first quarter.
Do we need a motion for the next meeting?
What is the time, Colleen?
Wendy needs it approved.
Okay.
How much time is it?
Can we do, do we need a motion for the next meeting? Because it's not on the agenda now, but can we just do it as a, do we need a motion and a?
Phil, you're the resident.
I'm looking up to see.
He's looking it up.
Looking it up.
So we don't really.
But what, in what form does the approval need to come? And does it, if it's, if it's a board vote, then it needs to be on the agenda. That's, that's where I'm coming from. And that's why I'm thinking maybe we do it at the July, at the Jan 23rd meeting unless there's a burning need to do it sooner.
I think it can be appropriately done here.
Can it?
Yeah, I think it can be appropriately done here.
Master of the Senate over here.
We authorized the general manager to move any unused vacation time from calendar year 2019 to the first quarter of 2020. I got it right?
Yes, thank you.
Okay.
All right. Second.
Okay. All in favor? Okay. Thank you, Phil, for getting something done. Appreciate it. It's a thing on, it's a thing on myself.
What about the rest of the board?
The thing on myself, not anybody else.
One could read it to the rest of the board members too.
Yeah, I didn't mean it that way.
Thank you for getting it.
Well, anyway, thank you, Phil. Thank everyone.
Don't get it, Dave.
All right, so let's move on to, to.
Thank me for providing an easy one for you.
Yeah, that would is easier than a few of the other things.
Chuck, you want to, sorry to have this go out for so long.
Chuck's a bang banger.
Next time we should maybe give ourselves 15 minutes per agenda item.
At most.
And just like, unfortunately, like an electric shock goes off.
Let's play it and see.
I don't have a choice because I have two more waiting behind me. The meetings went one hour and that was it.
I know, well.
Well, the old story, Dave, the meeting can be as long as you want. The question is how many questions you could allow, so.
I know, it's true. I mean, I probably should, anyway.
Chuck, I think you're fine.
Well, now that the board has cratered my performance evaluation for the year by sending my resource on vacation, and she's not going to be able to do that door to door solicitation. Just to put things quickly in perspective, if we can achieve a target of 1,700 electric vehicles as second vehicles within the RMLD service territory for residential customers to commute with. That is roughly 1% of our retail load. So I think that's an eminently achievable.
How many again?
1,700 electric vehicles.
How many do you figure there are now?
A couple of hundred. I think we've got about, something between 250 and 400. We're trying to.
In the four towns?
In, in the four towns.
So it's doable.
Just remember that if they assign that as a goal, that becomes your goal.
Yes, and I'm, and I'm.
Trickle down.
Yeah.
I wrote it, I wrote it down.
I'm, I'm very much a matrix management type of approach to things, which means that I am going to conscript the general manager as my sales delivery team for that objective.
Let us know how that works.
Well, you better believe it. Okay. The last time I did this was at the CAB meeting in December. It went about an hour and a half. I am going to attempt to do this in about 15 minutes and hit some highlights. And the reason is that I still have two more presenters behind me and I have to deal with them tomorrow morning as opposed to the commission. So we're, we're going to fly through this very quickly. The, the first report is the traditional monthly report and I can summarize it by saying things are very stable or have been. One of the things, I pulled the power supply team together today and asked them to begin tracking how the volatility in oil and gas prices is translating to market price. And what our exposure is and how much we're seeing as an impact from the current, we hope, short-term insecurities in the global energy markets. And our exposure is very limited. The TFA has bought us to, I think it's about 98% of our load. We are currently enjoying tropical weather here in the Northeast. So we're not exposed to extreme cold snaps and price volatility from those effects and.
You would just mention what TFA stands for, so everyone knows.
That's the transaction financial activity. It's basically. It's basically the tool that we use to make elections on power. And essentially what we're looking at when we do that is whether the forward price is below the four or five-year average for that period. And if it is, then we elect to make some purchases. And I'll be showing those in the second presentation. So if we want to begin, these are the very traditional slides and what you're seeing is that we're going to finish the year below our budget expectations and in very good shape. I believe that you're going to hear some of the numbers further on this evening in terms of the impact of where we've actually finished compared to what was budgeted a year ago, so. Despite the current disadvantages to my presentation, we'll slog forward. The, the energy package that we look at breaks into energy costs, capacity costs and transmission costs. And all we're doing with these next three slides is showing essentially where the below-market or below-budget activity has been. It was early in the year and as we get towards the end of the year here, you can see that our cumulative differential is showing at about $2.5 million below what was budgeted. The budget is based on the forward price curve. It includes volatility risk, it includes forward price uncertainty. And when we get into the actual market or we lock things down through some of our transactional purchases, we're able to buy risk unweighted power as opposed to risk-weighted power. So these are the energy savings that we've experienced. I believe the next slide is capacity savings. And you can see that we're looking at fairly hefty cost reductions there. And then the last slide is the transmission. Most of the transmission savings are due to sub-transmission costs. Part of this is actually the savings that we've achieved through use of the Peker unit and the battery energy storage system, Bessie? What, I can't remember what the Y is, but we changed from Best to Bessie. So those impacts are in here because they weren't factored into the budget. But basically, we had a good year. That's the upshot of that. So this just shows the, the resources that we've used throughout the year, where they are. The important piece, I think, in this slide is that the bulk of those resources are going away in the next two years. The bilateral contracts that are the red zone in the middle, those are expiring. That would be the Exelon and the Nextera contracts. The Nextera, we lost one piece of as of December 31st. And December 31st of 2020, we will lose the rest of the Nextera bilateral and the Exelon bilateral.
So what happened?
We have to replace them and that's the next presentation. Excellent segue. Thank you.
He told me to ask that question.
So I'm going to try and go fairly quickly on the highlights of this as opposed to the hour and a half that I subjected Vivek and John to during the last presentation. So basically, what we're looking at is our portfolio. This is historically what our portfolio has been comprised of for the, the past, what do we got in here, 12 years?
There's 10 years. It's the makeup of power supply, costs, capacity, and transmission and see how those kind of change throughout those 10-year timeline.
Basically, what you, you've seen is that we have a bubble of capacity costs in 2018. They were 36% of our portfolio. They're dropping back down. They were 34% for the next year and they're going to continue to fall. 2020, they went from a high in 2018 of about $10 a KW month to 2023, which we're still looking out towards at about $3.50, $3.80 KW month. So we're, we're looking at capacity is falling off. Transmission is continuing to grow as a cost. Energy's just been very stable as a component. So we've seen the, the energy costs drop as the cost per kilowatt hour went from $55 to $45 a megawatt hour and that just shows in the energy price. But our costs have been fairly stable. We had a high period in 2018. 2019 it dropped and 2020, we're looking at stable. And after that, it's anybody's guess what we're going to be up against. So if we go to the next slide, this is the forward-looking slide and that dotted area in the top is our open position. That's market power. That's open. Those are decisions that we get to make. Do we want to stay in market power, take whatever the marginal price is? It is the lowest cost and the most volatile. Or we can buy contract resources. We can buy short-term resources, we can buy longer-term resources, we can buy non-carbon resources and pay a non-carbon premium for them. Most of our investment of late has been in non-carbon components for the portfolio, including the option on RECs going forward so that whatever the legislature decides, whenever the legislature decides it, we will be able to respond and be compliant. There are three lines on this graph. The lower line on the graph is the original RPS. It's there for information. It's been superseded by the clean energy standard now. The RPS was, I believe, 50% by 2050 of renewable. The new clean energy standard is 80% of the portfolio by 2050, non-carbon. The focus has moved to greenhouse gases and carbon dioxide reduction. So that's where that is. The gold line is what we proposed through Representative Golden and that is the municipals coming onboard, catching up to where the standard is and then matching the IOU's commitment or standard going forward. What you see here with the light blue, the medium blue and the dark blue are the non-carbon commitments that RMLD now has. And essentially, we meet every standard through 2029. So we are well-positioned. We now have a nine-year, almost 10-year compliance built into or baked into our portfolio. So if we did nothing else, we would be compliant for 10 years. But we aren't stopping here. Okay? We've already made a commitment, we've presented to the commission that as we grow our retail load with electric vehicles and heat pump technology, we will serve that load through new non-carbon resources so that we are not adding to the problem going forward. So that's the integrated resource piece of it. We're making sure that the whole portfolio ties together. And then we get into the choices that we have to make going forward. And there are any number of options that we have for doing that. Short-term bilateral contracts, we have proposal from one vendor for a non-carbon portfolio. They will sell us whatever we would like to buy, whatever blocks we need, and they will guarantee to provide us the carbon, zero-carbon emission certificates to go with that. They are not renewable energy certificates, they are just a certificate that guarantees the resources non-carbon. And that will comply with whatever comes out of the golden rule. So we're well-positioned and we have a lot of options. I will also point out that until we commit to certain prices, we also have a lot of risk. Because until we know what price we're going to commit to, until we know what committing to that price does when we embed it in our portfolio and our rates, we don't know what we've locked in for future rate adjustments. Yes, sir?
The, I forget, the consortium, whatever that we joined, you know, that, you know what I mean?
Energy New England?
Yeah, do they, do they help us with this or do we get benefits in this area?
Yes, we do. They're out there currently negotiating with counterparties, exploring the markets that's out there and bringing opportunities to us. I believe that there are currently three open contracts that we have been invited to participate in and one that has resolved itself and that we're committed to going forward. So they're the bulk of where we look for our portfolio, but we continue to be active ourselves in the market and, and do some bilateral contract work. Some of that is the TFA that we have. And that is a bilateral with Nextera where we watch the price and when it meets our requirements, we lock in for those units.
So that's a nice benefit being involved in that.
Yeah, Energy New England just helped us with the Nextera deal where it's, it was a combination of solar and nuclear, building the duck curve with the nuclear with the solar. And so they do a good job working with everyone to create these carbon-free projects that, you know, some of them going forward will take four years to build. So you have to plan now and, and invest in projects that aren't even going to be built for four years. So we need companies like that to keep, keep it going. And there's a lot of legislative red tape, a lot of things that go with trying to get, you know, permitting and all that type of funding and everything for those projects.
So we have a balance of market opportunities. For example, some of our hydro contracts are contracts that we have secured bilaterally, i.e. directly with the output provider and some are ENE projects where we are one of multiple municipal light plants that are taking some of the project off. So we, we've got a very good balanced approach to managing our market activity, at least I feel that way. I guess my evaluation through Colleen will tell me whether that's working or not. Next, please. So.
These next few slides go through the RPS, CES and Goldenbill and kind of what is in there, just from a high level and what would be required of us to kind of meet that in which year, kind of like what Chuck said in that broad graph.
So these, these are kind of the going down into the weeds slides, if you will, from what you saw in the, in the previous one. And I'm going to kind of pass over these quickly and if in your own private reviews of these, you come up with questions, please feel free to pass them along through normal channels and we'll get you some more information. We can also revisit this presentation at another time. So next, please.
I'd like the hour and a half version that Vivek got.
We've got some notes here too.
We can do that. We can skip over this one, this one, this one, this one, and the next one. Okay. So this is the experience that we had with the TFA program. This was a pilot program that we did beginning in 2017. We started to, to lock those down. When I came onboard at the end of 2018, we, we did some more of these transactions and we've recently locked down another $9 million worth of these transactions going forward. So they cover a, a number of years and they buy in blocks of peak or off-peak power for whatever months the pricing looks at. We get forward price curves on a monthly basis going out two years. And so we're able to look and see how the market is transacting and using that and working with Nextera. We make decisions about whether it is advantageous to us to lock in that power supply. So it is a price risk mitigation. It puts downward pressure on power supply costs. That's what it's there for. That's its sole purpose is to lock down lower prices.
Does this become then the new standard for next year so that the budget now becomes this?
I answered that question last month. Yes. What happens is as we make these deals and in order to keep pace with things, we're doing this almost the same way that you're looking at changing the evaluation process, we keep moving the target. So once we've got these deals locked in, we know their impact, we roll them into the budget and we're getting quarterly budget updates from Energy New England so that we change the target and the rate going forward for the year. It's very structured decision-making. Right now I have an excellent team of analysts, but there's no guarantee that that team is going to be there for the next 10 or 20 years. And so we have a structure that we can tweak now while everybody's available to look at it, get it as optimal as possible, and then it's in place, whatever happens to the future. So it's, can either be a backup tool for us or it can be a frontline tool. But it's there, it works, it's a second set of eyes on things and we're really very pleased through the whole group with, with how this is performing. So, and it is the energy portion of our portfolio management, so capacity and transmission are still managed elsewhere. And the answer to your question is yes, it secures lower budget pricing and that gets carried forward. Next, please. Okay. This is the activity to date. This is by month, by year, what we have already locked in and the value that it's been locked in at. And so we have a total of almost $33 million of contract commitments going forward just under this protocol. So, next, please. So we also ran another pilot program this past year and this was a load following program. And the objective of the load following program was to take out load volatility risk and price volatility risk. It was to lock in a fixed price and Nextera was going to take the risk of misestimation of our load when we bid into the market onto their shoulders from ours. It performed as Nextera said that it would. We have no qualms there, but because. We have no qualms there, but because we have more resources than most municipal light plants, we think we're able, with our own eyes on it right now, to be able to manage that. Now, this takes volatility out. As long as the market is tranquil, there's no volatility risk. So, we're not seeing volatility risk for the next 24 months. One of the things we're looking at now is this short-term volatility to see, how dynamic does it get and where are the dollars flowing? We can use that as additional information to evaluate the benefits and the risk mitigation potential on the load-following. But right now, it is the feeling within our group, primarily Zach, that we can do as well managing the portfolio ourselves without turning all of the risk mitigation over, that we can get a few more dollars out of the system by doing it ourselves.
So, I think this was an important point that was mentioned in the 90-minute presentation, that the team feels that they'll do better than working with Nextera at the load-following.
On the load-following agreement?
Yep.
And the options to buy other products?
So, that was important. So, I just want to emphasize that point.
Good. We think that with...
Zach wanted to make a comment, too.
I've been tracking that, so we'll have an update here soon with the March and December performance on that. So, I've been running the numbers just to see what could have happened in today's numbers, 2013 numbers, which was a high price time, and then with the local product, which is an act of... So, we'll get to see that here soon.
So, this is a tool, Nextera has it. We were both piloting it, they've learned a lot, we've learned a lot. They're not terribly happy that we didn't renew. Obviously, the transaction revenues to them are nice, but this is something that we can keep for the future and evaluate, and it may be at some point that this is a direction that we go. But the last two points were the important ones. It operated below the budget projections, which is what they said it would do. We think we can outperform it.
Nice. That's very impressive.
And I'm betting Zach's employment that we'll do it.
We're going to set that as a goal for you.
One more thing to note, so with that load-following product, there's a price that is constant that they sell that energy to us, the load-following, to us. If that number reaches below a certain equilibrium that we can figure out, then it would be advantageous to go into that. But at that point, I mean, the rate's not there yet, so we just keep doing the transactional facilitation agreement, where we're acquiring blocks when the price is right.
So, next, please. So, I also put up some to-date information on how our peak management programs have worked. We essentially have three. We have the natural gas generator, we have the BESI project, the battery energy storage, and we also have customers participating in the Shred the Peaks program. And so, basically, we've, we've put those numbers up there as well as how our solar choice programs are doing. Keep in mind, there are some negative numbers there for the solar choice, too. Those are timing issues when it came online, which they've been slowly rectifying. I believe 2020, they're going positive, and we expect to see that at the end of the project be a positive outcome. But total to date is about $1.5 million in capacity and transmission savings.
Nice.
And that's over two years. I think when the gas turbines came online, the gas turbine came online was, Hamed, two years ago?
Yeah.
So, this is, this is about two years' worth of performance. And the battery actually came online in May of this year, so one year on the, on the battery. So, we expect this number to grow over time. This is a net number, by the way. This isn't gross savings less what it costs to operate, this is the net savings value. So...
That's great.
Can I go backwards on my goals?
Yeah, we need to have a million five total year-to-date.
Well, as much as, you know, I would like to be presidential and be able to take credit for anything that's a positive outcome in my term, whether I had anything to do with it or not, these efforts were put in place before I got here. So, I will bask in the reflected glory of what Hamed and his team did to get the gas turbine up. Tom Malola was the project manager for these. Everybody in the Integrated Resources Department has been involved with the Shred the Peak program, so this is a team effort, and I think that needs to be reflected. Next? That's it, that was the last one. Okay.
Less than 90 minutes?
A lot less than 90 minutes, but in fairness, I wasn't interrupted with as many questions from Vivek and John this time as I was.
So, they were paying attention, then?
Yes, they were!
I mean, this time.
Can I make a comment? So, one of the reasons, thank you Chuck, you did a great job.
Yep.
One of the reasons why I asked Chuck to make this presentation, and all of those slides are on here if you want to look at it in detail, is we have the renewable policy that's still sitting there that we need to update. And I had said that, you know, we tried to change the words to sustainable for just the interim while we're waiting for the legislation to tell us what it is that we're going to need to do. But Chuck has demonstrated to you that whether it's the CES, the Golden Bill, whatever, that based on carbon, we're meeting all of the requirements and taking credit for nuclear and non-carbon that all of the ratepayers in the system have already invested all their money in, which is the whole concept of going, you know, towards this bill. And then we play catch-up and we go further, and you can look on the slide and it'll tell you exactly what the Golden Bill objectives are. So, the question is, what would you like your board policy to say on the renewables? If you'd like me to revise it and have it match what Chuck has presented, I can do that and send it to you, if you want to think about it. But, you know, right now, it just says, you know, you're going to have a certain amount of renewables, which we are adding. So, when you look at the golden, if you look at the Golden Bill that he just provided you...
And that's the bill that the meme supports that hasn't passed, right?
So, the GGS shall set the minimum percentage of non-carbon emitting energy sold by each municipal light plant. The GGS begins at 7% in 2021 and goes to 80% by 2050. Non-carbon emitting shall be defined as energy from facilities using the following generation technologies, to the extent that any REX associated with the output are not sold. Qualified resources are as follows: solar PV, solar thermal, hydroelectric, nuclear, marine or hydrokinetic energy, geothermal energy, landfill methane, and aerobic digestion gas, biomass fuel, wind energy, and other generation qualified for RPS or CES. So, that's the criteria. You know, I know here that we sell a lot of the REX, there's a lot of solar that we actually don't even have the REX. They were put into the economics when the vendor built the solar. But of the REX that we sell, they go into projects to continue to meet these standards. So, we have to remember that municipal utilities are the number-one investors in clean power going forward. We are the ones that come up with the money to build these things. So, that's where those rec money is going. So, if you'd like me to, you know, try revising it, to address this with these attached, I can send it, you can review it at your leisure, and we can make a decision. But that was the whole point of this presentation.
I think that makes a lot of sense.
Yes.
And if legislation changes, guess what? When you change your policy, you can change it again.
Yeah. Vivek, Vivek?
One question. This talks about, when you show the chart, you're saying we are already meeting the projections through 2029, but does that account for the REX? But it doesn't say anything about the REX, right? Because right now, we don't...
It's non-carbon.
Yeah, yeah.
We're meeting the non-carbon standard, which is what we believe, based on the fact that the clean energy standard is now in place and the Golden Bill is being debated, which is how municipals will be brought on board, that non-carbon is going to be the standard, and we're doing that.
So, but for the non-carbon, are you, I presume this allows you to count only the ones for which you're not selling the REX, right?
No.
It allows them to do it even if they're selling the REX.
Okay.
Right?
Yes. And the reason for that is, those REX that we're selling are part of decisions that were made before we were required to comply with the statute. Now, we do have those REX, we always have the option of retiring them instead of selling them, but we're sitting here talking about keeping our sales up. There's a concept called price elasticity. As you raise rates, customers get more attention to how much they're using, and they tend to curtail some of their use. So, we're very sensitive to how much price is changing and what we can do to keep price down while still getting those carbon reduction effects in our portfolio. It's balance, and that's what we're striving for. So, when we get the policy, we will...
Meaning the Golden Bill, if it passes? When you say when we get the policy, you mean if the Golden Bill passes?
Yeah, but right now, we're writing it more on the Clean Energy Standards Act that's in place.
The Golden Bill will mirror the clean, the clean energy standards. So, what we're looking is to comply with those standards now. And we're doing a lot of good faith with the legislature by working to comply with a piece of legislation that's been on the table for almost a year at this point, without action. And we're going forward to comply with the terms of that legislation.
Yeah, so it's a little confusing, I think, to some of us, anyway. Maybe just to me. I've heard it said that we have, boy, 15% nuclear, right, for our MLP's power supply?
About that, yeah.
About that. And then, how much you say is non-carbon depends on whether you do or don't count the sold REX, and if you do count the sold REX, as the Golden Bill would allow you to, right?
No, REX only have to do with renewable. So, even if you have the REX or don't have the REX, that plant is still non-carbon. So, we're not talking about renewable. We're talking about commitments to non-carbon, so it doesn't matter if you have the REX or not.
Under the MLP way of looking at things?
Every, every resource is a two-tiered test against the statute. First test, does it emit carbon? If it does not emit carbon, it is a non-carbon resource that counts against the clean energy standard. The next test is, does it have a Massachusetts qualifying renewable energy certificate? If it does, and we buy and retire that certificate, then it meets the renewable energy standard. So, two separate tests for every resource. We count all the resources as being non-carbon.
Right.
We can take some of those and acquire REX and retire them, which then meets the renewable energy standard portfolio, but it is a two-tiered test.
So, the confusing part is, in your description of the GGS, the Golden Bill, you put in a statement that only the REX which are not sold will be considered non-emitting carbon. So, that's why I asked that question.
Right, because if they're, if they're not sold, then it's renewable, not, it's not qualified, not in carbon, it's qualified renewable.
But, but you're saying the rule is for non-carbon, right? I mean, the goal is non-carbon, and if everything that's non-carbon, irrespective of whether the REX is sold or not...
Correct.
Then you're in compliance with the objectives of the state.
Right. If you want to have renewable on top of that, you can have renewable on top of that. That's the point of the board policy, that you can, we're saying what the standard is, but the board can vote to have...
Colleen, I'm sorry, I'm just, I'm bringing this up because my sense is something like this is going to go up on the website, right? And so, if something like this is going to go up on the website, it'll say that non-carbon emitting shall be defined as whatever, to the extent that any REX associated with the output are not sold. So, you may want to need to change that language. That's the only part I'm discussing.
He's just quoting from the slide here.
You'd like us to clarify that it meets the tier-one test that is non-carbon, as opposed to being a tier-two test, which is a renewable resource.
That could be a mistake on my, my part, so I...
Okay. No, so please, no, because I'm responding to, because you'll put something like this on the website, so I just want to make sure it's...
No, I, I understand, and will clarify that all of our resources are what I will call for now tier-one resources, non-carbon. They meet the clean energy standard, which has a higher energy target than renewable portfolio standard, but an easier threshold to cross, okay? So, tier-one, non-carbon, tier-two, renewable. Now, we are looking at programs where we will acquire and retire the REX because we have customers that want that renewable tag on what is delivered to them.
I know we're all tired, we're all tired, but you know, there is an issue with saying non-carbon is one thing and renewable is another.
It's just a definitional thing, as put out by the state or the legislature, right? I do think we need to move on.
We do, we do. We need to move on. Okay, let's move on.
And if you have residual concerns, please put them into some context and communicate them over to us.
I will. Let's do that. Good idea.
We're, we're trying very hard to meet the policy requirements of the commission, the statutory requirements of the legislature, and the portfolio requirements, such as they are. So...
Thank you, Chuck.
Please, get that, get that to me, and we'll figure out a way to address whatever the residual concerns are.
Thank you. Good, good stuff. Okay, thanks, Chuck. Sorry, everybody, the meeting's going on, I need to do a better job of putting things along.
Or fewer things on the...
Or fewer things on the agenda. We had a couple of big ones up front, though.
Doing fine.
Yeah. Thank you, Phil, for that. Okay, Wendy, sorry to, we'll give you a glass of adrenaline and... This is your return appearance, Wendy. Yeah. Now, you've been here only since, what, 6:30 a.m.?
No, not that early.
Only seven. Tracy gets here really early.
Oh, my God!
Now, that's just not healthy.
Right. And she ran here.
See, I have young kids, I have to take care of them. Okay, I'm here to present...
Thanks for your hard work on the payment stuff, by the way.
Oh, thank you.
Yes.
Colleen and I did work, thank you, I appreciate it. I am here to present the financial report for the year ending November, for the 11 months ending November 30th, 2019. So, a quick recap of what we're looking at when we look at the financials. Unrestricted cash of $20.7 million covers approximately three months of the average monthly operating expenses of $6.9 million. Accounts receivable are $99... Accounts receivable are 99% current, which we include up to 90 days. Net plant increased by $1.5 million as compared to 11/30/2018. Year-to-date base revenue increased by 3% year-to-year with a decrease in kilowatt-hour sales of 3% as well. That goes through 11/30/2019. Year-to-date purchased power fuel expense exceeds purchased power fuel revenue by about $890,000. Purchased power capacity and transmission revenue exceeds purchased power capacity and transmission expenses by approximately $440,000. And operating and maintenance expenses are under budget by approximately 12.7% at 11/30/2019. So, the first slide is showing you the trend...
Can I ask a quick question? I know where... A decrease of 3% in kilowatt sales?
Yes.
This, so far?
Yes.
Okay. That's, is that lower than we expected? Is that a bigger decrease than we expected?
Yes.
Is part of that, though, the battery helping out in the, for the peaks?
No, it's the weather.
Okay.
It's mild.
Mild weather.
Weather.
Okay. That's all. I'm sorry.
Well, that's helpful to take into consideration.
Thanks.
The payment options.
Yeah.
Okay. So, then, here, we're looking at the trend in kilowatt-hour sales, month-to-month, over three years through November. And this is where you can see, if you look at your summer months, this is where you can see the big decrease here: June, July, August, September. This is, this is where the, the big swing is. The pie chart of the cash balances is always pretty to look at. Currently, in depreciation fund, we have $8.9 million towards our capital infrastructure. And as I stated, cash is at approximately $20.7 million. That's the operating fund. And I'd like to point out that sick buyback, the sick leave, restricted sick leave funds total is about $2.3 million. And with the new contracts and the sick buyback option, we may be very happy to see that decrease because we do have some participants taking, taking advantage of that. And the final slide is your year-to-date operating and maintenance expenses, the actual debudgeted. As I stated, 12.7% decrease, however, as usual, at this time of year, we are trying to get all the invoices in to capture all the expenses in the right months through 12/31. So, I'm, I'm going to go out saying that it's not going to be that drastic. So, as soon as we get, we capture all the vendor expenses through the 12 months, I think we'll be closer to our target. Maybe not quite there, but closer. And that is, that concludes that piece of what I have to say.
Thank you very much, Wendy.
Yes. But I do have a small other piece. It's the OPEB motion.
Ah, yes.
Yes.
Famous OPEB motion.
Yes, it is.
I remember that well, from a couple of meetings ago. There was only two figures discussion.
Does somebody want to read the motion?
Okay, Phil, do you want to read?
So, I looked at this motion. I think we should break this into two separate motions as opposed to one big motion. So, and I kind of tweaked some of the language here, too. So, let me read what the first part of it. Move that the Board of Commissioners vote to rescind the previous board vote of September 19th, 2019, relative to a declaration of trust for OPEB purposes on the recommendation of the General Manager.
Is there a reason to break this in? Is there a reason it's written as it is? Because I know you went over this with, with Chris.
We voted so that it would be just logical to say, we're going to go back, rescind this, and then re-vote...
Are you okay with what he's doing here, as far as cutting it into two?
Yes, perfectly fine.
Okay, fine. Carry on, sorry.
Okay. So, I made the motion.
Second. Okay. All in favor? Okay.
Second part is, move that the Board of Commissioners vote to adopt and execute the Declaration of Trust presented by the General Manager for OPEB purposes on December 9th, 2019, and the recommendation of General Manager.
Second. Could you ask, say the discussion? Can you say that? Sure. What is this? I'm confused. Something from last time. Okay, but can you explain what we're fixing?
So, a couple of meetings, one after another, we presented the idea that we had to re-accept, I don't have it in front of me, re-accept a motion, you know what? I do have it in front of me. Re-accept 32B, Section 20 of the OPEB statute in order to invest...
I remember that.
Remember that?
Yeah.
Okay, so we can invest and have a, yield a higher percentage for our other post-employment benefits. So, at one of the meetings, we had mentioned that we were going to vote to accept a declaration of trust that was not presented to you. We had, we had gone through all the other motions that were presented. This particular piece was not presented. That's why we're rescinding it, because you voted on something that you didn't have.
Okay.
So, then, we have, I sent you the email as the board. I sent the whole declaration of trust for your review, and now we're asking you to accept the declaration of trust. Yes?
Yes.
Great.
All in favor? I think we did a motion second. Five. And all opposed against, zero.
Okay.
That is done.
That is it.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Hameed, last, but most certainly not least.
Is that supposed to be a paycheck, Hameed?
Yeah. Hameed's been here since 6:30.
Okay, I can give you a long version, an hour and a half, if you'd like to stay here, or the very short one for five minutes, or, how about that?
How about we compromise on four?
Would you eat me unless when you're done? I guess we've reached that.
Compromise on 45.
Majority of vote, right? Five, five minutes. All right. Thank you so much.
I think six people actually voted.
All right. So, basically, in, you know, a short version, we're doing very well. We are right on target with the projects. We were up until the end of December. And the major construction projects that you see, we completed, we achieved the goals for 2019. Some projects that are still running to 2020. You see the first one, Marion Street Projects, that's going to 2020, Phase 2, which was budgeted, and you approved the next one. You see, these are the scatimate switches, those smart switchers that we've installed, and, you know, we put them all up. So, everything is operational. We just need to add radio to those because the radios, they came in late order. So, now that they're being installed. The next one, these are the area upgrades that we said we're gonna, we are upgrading the old areas that they needed to be upgraded, approved, basically. Everything, the primary, secondary, the connections and everything are on target on those. And we've made lots of progress on those. The pad mount switch gears, you know, they, we did them, and we got them all installed. And we still got more to be installed, about maybe 15 more that they're going to be done within the next three years or so. The next one, you'll see the step-down upgrade area. This is really, we made a great progress on those, to upgrade those old areas in Lynnfield, mostly. And we've, we've started seeing that, you know, the reliability on those areas have been improving. The same thing in Wilmington area, so these step-down areas, the upgrades that done, and we still got more to do in 2020, which are planned. The next slide is showing you the maintenance, basically, programs. We're all on target on maintenance. It's great. It's working. That's one of the, I think, the main reasons for having a great reliability. So, the, it, it's really working well. The next slide is showing you, basically, the age transformers to date that been replaced. As you could see, we have, in 2019, we replaced 81 transformers. And so far, the number of transformers, all the transformers that we've replaced since we started the program in 2015, there are 1,513, which equates to approximately 37%. This is a moving target. And as the transformers, they're getting that age of 25 years, they're getting on the list to be changed. The next one is the next most important maintenance program, and that's a poll and inspection repla-and replacement program. We, every year, we do 700, 700 to 800 polls, test them. As you could see, we started in 2014, and we had a high percentage of those polls that they failed or condemned. And now, we're getting down really to, since we started with the older polls, now we're getting more into the stabilized region, which is good. And so far, out of the, so far, 4,075 polls inspected and about 518 failed. The definition of fail is not really, doesn't mean that the pole is going to fall. If they're condemned, that's what it means. If it's condemned, we immediately, you know, replace the pole. But the fail meaning, there's still life left to the pole, like, less than 50%. It's not going to go anywhere. That means put it on schedule for upgrade and, you know, replacement. And that's what we do. We are right on top of that. And we're going, again, by the age, the most, or the old one, old ones going to the new one. So, that's it. The next slide shows the, basically, the polls. You see, in Lynnfield, we got like about 69 polls. That's the area that we did these step-down upgrades. That's why we got 69 polls, that they're double polls, we need to try to do the transfers. The other areas pretty much are within the range that, you know, you normally see every year, every, every quarter, every year. So, and our crews are, as we're making those transfers, they pulling those pole butts out of the ground in our set areas, rise and zoom in their set areas. So, we are right on target with those. The last one is the best one, which basically says how reliable we are. We got one of the most reliable systems, I can strongly say, in the northeast region. So, we are well below the national and regional averages. And the credit goes to those programs that, you know, we did for maintenance and, you know, having a good, well-organized program. The last one is showing, basically, the origins to date to November 30th, basically, across all those categories. You see, the equipments are down really compared to five years average the same time. The trees are doing well. For wildlife, we're doing better. Motor vehicle excellence is up, you know, the weather and some announced, they're up. But overall, we're on the right track, so they're all working. So, did, did I make it in five minutes or...
Good. Good. Well done.
Thank you.
And you don't need any money, right?
Any questions? What is it?
You don't need any money.
No, I don't need any money. Well, next, the next time around.
Thank you very much.
Thanks, Hameed. Appreciate it.
Okay. Who's next? I think we're all set. We're just confirming these. The next meeting will be the 23rd of January, and then February 20th, and then...
It's like next week, isn't it?
It's three weeks, but two and a half weeks.
I'm not sure I'll be here for the 23rd.
Okay.
I'm flying back from Florida that day, so I don't know if we'll be back in time.
Okay.
Okay.
So... And Dave, you'll cover the February cab meeting?
Yes. Do you have a date on that?
Uh, it should be February 20th. I think it's at 5:30.
Oh, it's going to be here. Okay. Yeah.
But I think it's earlier.